We would like to welcome you and also ask you if you would please put your phone on vibrate or silent. If you would, please stand for our invocation and put them.
Praise is Christ. Dear heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of your son Jesus Christ. We thank you for this gathering this evening to honor and to celebrate our teachers, our students, and our staff. We thank you especially, Father, for the blessing of their education, of their direction, and their guidance. We ask you, dear Lord, to continue to guide us, to teach us in all your ways to be better people, better students, better staff, and better for this whole community. And all of God's people say amen.
Ladies and students, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And also I want to...
Guys, there are chairs in the front if you'd like to have them. There's some more over here if you'd like to join us.
I do want to recognize that our board chair, Mrs. Brigham, is online. She's out in the hospital, so we ask your prayers for her.
Absolutely.
At this time, we'll have recognition.
All right, so what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is we're going to start off with 5-3A Teacher of the Year recognition. And I'm going to ask Ms. Sheets if she will pick up from there. And we'll ask our principals to come up and recognize their individuals. And then we will then turn it over. We'll recognize the district teacher of the year.
Y'all, there are seats. Come on. I've got everybody shot. Come on. I'm not even talking yet. Y'all, come on. There's some seats over there. And there's chairs where my stuff is. Take those chairs. All of them, please. Come in and sit. Be comfortable. We want you. All right. My live... Do y'all hear me? All right, boys. So nice to see so many faces this evening. We have a lot to celebrate here in McIntosh County. And I'm glad that you're all here to join us as we do. As you know, we have three schools. And each school has a teacher of the year winner. But we actually have four teachers of the year candidates for the 2023 district teacher of the year. As a result of competitive complications, teachers who were selected as teachers of the year last year were given the opportunity to participate in this year's competition so that everyone would have the opportunity to either be McIntosh County Schools' district teacher of the year and/or go on to the state teacher of the year competition. So one teacher decided to take advantage of this opportunity. So we have four candidates from our three schools this year. We would like to begin this evening's recognition by having the principals introduce their teachers. So first, I would like to invite Ms. Riles to the front so that she can properly introduce the teacher of the year for Todd Grant.
All right, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. I was looking for a good photographer in the crowd. But good evening, everyone. It is my privilege to recognize Mrs. Alicia Durant as Todd Grant Elementary Teacher of the Year.
Come on up.
Mrs. Durant has been a teacher at Todd Grant for the past thirteen years. And I've had the pleasure of knowing her for slightly longer. She is the product of McIntosh County Schools and a former student in one of my classes not so long ago. During her tenure at Todd Grant, she has served as a kindergarten teacher, first grade, second grade, and early intervention teacher. She has been called upon to serve as grade-level team leader from time to time. She's currently a member of our PBIS team. And she is also a mentor teacher for teachers new to Todd Grant and teachers new to the profession. She truly exemplifies the characteristics of an outstanding teacher. She believes in her students, and she pushes them to achieve and maximize their potential. And she never accepts, "I don't know how to do this," or "I can't do this." She digs in, and she finds a way to make it happen. She's also very supportive of her colleagues. She shares her time, her skills, and her knowledge with others, and she doesn't ask for anything in return. Mrs. Durant, I'm very proud of you. And I appreciate all you do for our students and our entire school community. And congratulations on being selected by your peers as Todd Grant's teacher of the year.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Booker Up from our McIntosh Middle School so that he can recognize his teachers of the year.
Good evening. And we're going to begin with Ms. Cindy Gerald. And Ms. Gerald's been with us for almost twenty-seven years now in McIntosh County and has ingrained her both the schools and the community. She's really a passionate civility whenever it comes to McIntosh County Middle School. In the seventh grade, she's been team leader now for quite a number of years and helped us sort of indoctrinate new teachers as they came along into the way of the McIntosh County. Ms. Gerald, she doesn't take no for an answer whenever it comes to getting her students to complete work, and it really shows. She's one of those teachers that you really appreciate, you know, three, four, four years down the line. And countless times, time and again, we've had Ms. Gerald display what I call the epitome of professionalism. She's somebody that you can always count, always on time, always there, always there to support her students and her fellow staffers. So again, I want to wish her congratulations and a great job over these many years at McIntosh County. And next, we have Ms. Jessica Crawley. Jessica was selected this past year by her peers as teacher of the year in McIntosh Countyville. And she teaches math resource classes as well as math remediation classes for us at the middle school. She does an excellent job. In the past, I've often seen these resource classes as a watered-down version of the regular curriculum. But that is not what happens in Ms. Crawley's class. She finds ways of scaffolding those children up to grade-level standards, which is what they're going to be tested on and what they really need to learn. She's also sort of our resident, fed expert. So if anything special education-wise, if we have a question, we can go to Ms. Crawley in the library. She's got the answer. Very, very intelligent and driven, and she's got a true heart for the children. That really comes through whenever you see her and hear her talk about the kids. Her emotions really kind of show through. She really wants the best for these kids and guys. So I think congratulations and great job, Ms. Jessica Crawley.
Next up is the principal of McIntosh Academy.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see everybody here tonight. It is with great pleasure and pride that I present to you tonight the McIntosh County Academy Teacher of the Year, Ms. Carissa Marni. Ms. Marni teaches science. She's been with us a couple of years. And when I interviewed her, she said all the right things as you would expect, but then she backed them up in the classroom on a daily basis. You know, she says she teaches all children, and she does. You know, it's very important to her that all children learn and succeed and achieve great things through what they're learning in biology. She does teach an end-of-course test class in biology. Immediately, her scores bore out what she was able to do in the classroom on a daily basis. She told me in that interview that she liked to volunteer for things, that she would do any and everything, and she was very interested. So I quickly put that in the back of my head and took her up on it more than once. Just some examples. She is leading our PBIS effort at this point for the entire school. She was, we needed a flag football coach last year, someone to be working with the girls in that sport. She said, "I don't know anything about it, but I want to help." You know, she wants to help whenever needed. She's not one that you have to chase. You know, she is in it for the kids at every level. And another example, she's going to the state competition this weekend on the chaperone for our one-out-play team as well, and they're going to compete on behalf of the NCAA. So, and other just some examples, she is an absolutely great teammate. She is a mentor to new teachers. Although she is fairly new to the profession itself, she is absolutely on top of what she's doing. You know, it is my pleasure, and we are blessed to be here every day, to have Carissa Marni as our teacher of the year.
I would like to congratulate all the teacher of the year recipients and their families for this prestigious award. If all three teacher of the year award winners would please join Mr. Masah up front. I would like to explain to everyone here why these awards are just so prestigious. So you three will come up front while I brag on you. Four, sorry. What are you going to do? All four. Doesn't matter, the order. All right, so here are some powerful statistics about teachers. The average teacher affects over three thousand students over the course of her career. Seventy-five percent of students say that teachers are their mentors and/or role models. Eighty percent of students say that a teacher has encouraged them to follow their dreams. Eighty-three percent of students say that a teacher has boosted their self-esteem and confidence. Teachers are powerful. But great teachers, teachers like these, teachers of the year, are even more powerful. Studies show that teachers' effect on academic growth, teachers affect. Awards, all other factors, class size, whatever, it is the teacher. Research shows that having good teachers five years in a row will eliminate all achievement gaps. Great teachers like these are powerful, and we are blessed to have them here in McIntosh County because they do more for our students and our community than we can ever even begin to imagine. In honor and recognition of your service to our students and our schools, the district, along with community partners, have put together a gift bag for each of you. So Mr. Masah will present those at this time. And just so y'all know, our partners in the local businesses, I want to give a shout out to all of these businesses. The Chamber of Commerce, The Canopy Restaurant, The Vin and Wildflower Boutique, Darian Telephone Company, Rimbe Mexican Restaurant, John Russell with Ballot, The Lunchbox, Colonial Life, ABC Nutrition, Waterfront Lining Gourmet, Zio Carlo, Skippers, Harper's Benefit Group, First Door Hardware. And I hope I haven't left anyone off. You can see them back there, but we are very thankful for that. All right, if everyone will join me, let's see if you can play it to another round.
Want to slide in and just get a picture behind that, please? Behind a window? Catherine's here. All right, congratulations.
All right, thank you. And now is the time to recognize the 2023 McIntosh County Schools District Teacher of the Year. This was a very meticulous and difficult process. To pick the best of the best is no easy task. The process begins at the school level. So these teachers are chosen by their peers. I mean, what an honor to be selected by the people who you work with every day. From there, each teacher is observed by the district team, and each teacher submits a packet which consists of biographical information, Emmy awards or recognitions, letters of recommendation, and several essays as answers to very detailed prompts. The district team scores each candidate based on all of the due criteria. From there, we have to choose the winner. I'd like to tell you a little bit about this year's McIntosh County Schools Teacher of the Year. So these are quotes from her letter of recommendation. "Her classroom is well organized and structured to provide an environment in which her students are encouraged and supported in developing both social, emotional, and academic skills. She is a rare gem in a field that is overworked. One of her greatest attributes is that she works excellence in silence. I have not once heard her brag on herself. Yet if you speak to anyone who knows her, they have nothing but compliments and praise for her as a teacher. In his book, Good to Great, Jim Collins suggests that level-five leaders are ordinary people quietly doing extraordinary things. That's her. And last but not least, this is one from one of her students. My teacher should be teacher of the year because she is the best teacher in the world. We made an explosion." So without any further ado, I'd like to ask Dr. Collos to announce McIntosh County Schools District Teacher of the Year.
All right, so I was given the envelope. McIntosh County School District 2023 Teacher of the Year is... Alicia Durant. Just take one real quick, and then the board will get in here. The board will slide in. You should take this time to prepare this speech. Congratulations.
I'm very honored and appreciative.
All right, so the next area of recognition, and if everybody would just kind of hold on. We'll go through all the recognitions. We're going to take a brief break afterwards. I'd like for everyone just to remain here if you don't mind, if you can. Let's do the drama awards next, please.
So we have a lot to celebrate tonight, and a lot of students from McIntosh County Academy to celebrate. So Mr. Willis is going to come up and present our first award of the evening for one of our students who was recognized by, did you say Art or Georgia Theater?
This is the drama. This is the Georgia.
From the Georgia Theater.
Is Olivia here?
She is. Come on up, Olivia.
Come on.
Please. Well, with great pleasure, I love celebrating and showing off great people, you know, students, teachers, you know, the whole family, community. It's one buck thing we've got going on. And this is Olivia Hutch. She is in our drama department. She plays Marie Antoinette in the play that they are putting on in The Revolutionist. And she is fantastic. If you've not seen the show, you have missed out. But we're going to have some matinees coming up soon. So watch those reminds. I'm going to pump them out to you, and we'll get the word out. A few weeks ago, in preparation for the region competition, which was a couple Saturdays ago at our school, which we, the drama team did win the region championship. They'll be going to state this Saturday. But prior to that, Ms. Autumn, the director, as she's preparing the cast and crew to put on this show, she did take them down to Georgia Theater Conference, which was held at Camden County High School this year. The students got to participate in workshops, different things, to better their craft. But they also performed in front of multiple schools, multiple adults, you know, the adjudicators, the judges that were there were professional theater folks. They'd come in, they'd bawl, give their time. And tonight, you know, all that awesome stuff going on, but it is with great pride that I present to you Olivia Hutchison was named to be All-Star Cast at the Georgia Theater Conference, which is not for everyone. It's only for the great ones. So ladies and gentlemen, Olivia Hutchison.
And if you could stay up there for just a minute, we'll get the board to come up. If you can slide over to the middle a little bit. Congratulations.
Next, we'd like to welcome our art teachers from McIntosh Academy to help celebrate their award winners from Coast Fest. So if you would come on up, Ms. Matt Bull and Ms. Nichols. We appreciate that.
I just want to say one thing. I really have been here, and she mentioned something about having teachers that mentor. There's been a lot of art teacher, and I get told that my grade is teaching art. I got awards that she gave out to me as a student. And we have two students here tonight, Lily Beaver and Marpelle Flotter. Arnauto and Alicia Velasco, they're not here tonight.
Show your work off from Coast Fest.
So we have these students, and I have them all compete in Coast Fest, which is a regional art competition. With combination of the PNR, the big festival, but they asked all students in our coastal area to come up with a theme. They share with sharks. And we combined tessellation and sharks. And we had Marpelle won second, oh, excuse me, third place. And Lily Beaver won Best Young Artist from our McIntosh County.
Now you guys slide in for a picture.
All right.
I can get the board to come in right behind you. Stay right there.
UCBC?
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you, ladies. All right, and so next up for a recognition, our FFA state winners. And so if you did not notice that gigantic object as you entered the actual boardroom, I know that we're going to have somebody talk a little bit about it in a second.
So without any further ado, Mr. Deverger, if you would come up to brag on your students for their work at the Perry State Fair.
Thank you for the board. Thank you for having Mr. Mike. And thank you, Kathleen, for the article. That was in the paper bragging to the students. That was a very nice special. I don't want to take a lot of time, but when you get teachers bragging about their kids, it's hard to stop sometimes, for sure. But I did want to say a couple of things about what the kids do in the shop and what they do in agro mechanics. They do learn the well, they do learn the wire. And agriculture classes are a lot about plant science and forestry and things like that. But it's a lot about leadership, and it's a lot about confidence, and getting the kid exposed to do things that they possibly never will experience unless they came in that shop. And so one of the first things they do is after working and learning how to operate safely and wear safety equipment in the shop, one of the first things we have is cut with a cutting torch. And that might not sound like a big deal to somebody that grew up on a farm. For a lot of these students to crank up something with dangerous gases and run a cutting torch at several thousand degrees, hot enough to melt metal, it does something to you. It changes a young teenager, I can tell. I can promise you. So to see some of the things that they, you know, kind of attribute later in their days or their life to the confidence building that they got in FFA, it's really great to see. So anyway, the first group that I'll recognize here will be our young lady team. Come on up. This is our, some of our FFA officers too, Karen Gill, Zoe Riles, and Sidney Rush. Well, a lot of our students went to Perry Fair last year. They walked around, and they saw some of the metals projects and woodworking projects that had won blue ribbons and red ribbons. We didn't enter anything in the fair, and we're three and a half hours away from Perry. So sometimes we feel like we're kind of out of the loop when it comes to running back and forth to the fair to put things in there. But they left with a fire last year, and they said, "We want to put some things in there, but we want to win. We can do that. We see things in here that we can do in our shop." These young ladies built a, I would call it a cowgirl-inspired boot and hat rack. It was made with a two-and-a-half-inch pipe, horseshoe, expanded metal, and rebar. And you can put your hats and your boots on when you come in from the mudroom, and keep them off the floor and things like that. So they really did an excellent job with their project. In the medium metals project, it received first place. Next up, two Georgia fans here, Jackson Coley and Todd Allen. These guys brought into the shop, what it looked like at first, I would call it a vision, a dream. It was something that needed a lot of work. They called it the Oyster Train. They said they were going to build an oyster steam table that you could cook off of. It was going to be nice enough to get into the fair, and they were on a pretty quick timeline to get it done. But they did. They worked their tails off. They stayed after school, put in a lot of hours. It received second place in this category. Let me get all the other cattle ones. All the guys and ladies did come tonight. They'll be recognized as well. All the guys you see in front of you, they worked on the new chapter project that you guys saw out front of the board. We're building here tonight. We call it El Gaucho. It is our South American-inspired oaken flame cooker. It is meant to cook with a rod, big roaring fire, let the coals roll down. And you can hang sausages and pineapples and chickens and cook all your steaks and everything. And it's just a, it's a production. It's a performance of cooking, apple wraps, I guess I'd say. But some of these guys stayed hours after school. They wanted it to get done. We were on the countdown. Y'all, it's one of a kind. I'm so proud of them. But they put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. Also, some guys that are in their football practice, of course. Dalton Riles worked a lot on this project. Wayne McClinton worked a ton on this project. As well as his other senior, and I'm just in as far as Perry particular projects. Those three guys in particular worked a lot, as well as these with the large metal projects. They got first place at the national fair. Another football player that couldn't be missed is Paul King, hit the Kell Crush, worked on a big open pit style cooker, swinging arm, they call it a four biller. It was meant to be cooked on an open fire style, and it received second place at the state fair, his category. And then Kay Taylor and Keaton Walker did a reconditioning project, it was actually done by some older, they were named Hewitt, Spencer Roger. Some guys that had been working on it, they're not here anymore. They're still doing things with our students, and they've been a lot. So it was cool to see them kind of recondition something the kids loved years ago, and it received second place, so.
Y'all stay right there for a second, Mr. Deverger, slide in there, please. We need you in there as well, please. Come on up, come on up. If I could, if I could just ask if, Mr. Deverger, the teachers of the year, our two art teachers, to stand up as well. Please to stand up for us. And again, the students that are being recognized tonight, what they did would not have been possible if it weren't for the hard work and dedication of our great teachers. So I'd like, if you won't mind, just do a round of applause. That concludes our recognitions for this evening. At this time, if we're gonna take a fifteen minute break, there's a reception area there with some cookies and some juice. If you'd like to join us and congratulate everybody at this time. So we're reconvening in fifteen minutes.
Alright, we'll resume our work session. Do we have any citizens addressed to you?
Clear it out.
If you would, you can get approval of our work session agenda. See your agenda before you. Do we have a motion?
Say it.
Motion, Kay, three. Mr. Poulos, I need your information.
Alright, so thank you, I thought that was a great recognition, and I appreciate anyone that had any part in organizing that. The gifts that were gathered, again, just fantastic, appreciate the support of our community.
Definitely.
And recognizing the absolute, you know, wonderful efforts of our teachers. So, you know, they deserve that recognition, and I'm proud of them. Especially proud that we were able to announce that Mr. Rant was our teacher of the year, and I'm hoping that the district will work with her on preparing her application for the next level. Alright, so first up here on our student success, we did have fall break, and all three schools had participants in the intercessions during that week. We're gonna continue to strive to do the same thing during the winter intercession that happens in February. That gets closer to the end of grades and EOC tests, and, you know, we get a bigger participation in that. I really would like to see more of our students get involved in that, and for us to do a little bit more of just getting the parents to encourage those students to come. But we did have a successful intercession at all three of the levels. I know Mr. Willis just stepped out, but I wanna, if I go down to number two, the CTAE department at the high school came to me and said, look, we'd like to work with the college and with the entrepreneurship. Mr. Lucas has the Lucas Center there for business and entrepreneurship. And so we said, you know, we got a new hotel coming. Each of the pathways that we currently have at the high school lends greatly to to the entrepreneurship process as well as hospitality. So we met three or four times with a small group of individuals from various entities and to develop an opportunity to get this thing off the ground. And so I'm happy to say as well that the DOE offered a fifty thousand dollar grant for someone, you know, for an organization to start a process of building a hospitality pathway. And we submitted an application and we received it. So fifty thousand dollars to help us get this thing going. And working with, again, the college and a dual enrollment capability, and in trying to make sure that we work on both our culinary as well, our FFA and our business folks, all of them together, and trying to get students in there to learn about the business aspect of whatever their career field is, once they leave school. And then also, just to really build up this hospitality in the sense that now that we have a large motel in our area, or hotel in our area, it's important that we have a workforce that can help them out. But you, all of the jobs that are available, that we'll work with them as well, as trying to do some of the, what I call, on-the-job training opportunities, as well as work-based learning. And so we're gonna, the next step is to build a budget with this fifty thousand to make sure that we keep this thing going. So I'm really excited about that, and I appreciate the hard work of Mr. Collins and Ms. McLean in coordinating and putting that actual grant application in, and then we got it.
Good deal, good deal.
Alright, next area up here, girl area two, organizational effectiveness, October FTE count for 2022. Can you pull up that document for us, please? I'm excited to say that we have sixty-seven, and tell me, I'll see if I'm wrong, sixty-seven more students than we had last year in this same FTE count. From FTE count one to FTE count one of last year, sixty-seven. So what I tasked Mr. McNair and Ms. Lane to do is to go through all thirteen hundred of our students and make sure that they have the right schedules, and that we're optimizing, and the key word is optimizing their schedule for FTE purposes. And so it's not just important to say, yeah, everybody's got a schedule. We wanna make sure that we have the right codes for everyone. So as it stands right now, and we have a program that we, you know, I brought with me from Glen County called USHA. And the USHA, in and of itself, takes all that same data and says, this is how much money you can earn on each of those segments. And unlike Power School, that just, you know, it's that in, that out, that actually calculates and says, if you got errors, et cetera. For every one FTE that we find, we pay for USHA. I mean, it's really that close. But we're looking right now that we will average about, and tell me if I'm wrong, I'll see, but QBE through the FTE process, if everything continues, you got around two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to what we normally get. And so that's exciting, that we're moving forward. I had a meeting with the state board in October, and they were concerned that even at state level, there's still shortages. And I said, we're not short, right now, we're actually gaining student bodies. So we're excited, and I wanna make sure that this, the board understands that our FTE count for that time is looking pretty good. And I do commend the two sitting back there for the hard work. They work with the principals and making sure that the FTE is accurate. So thank you both. Any questions on the FTE?
Once again, of course, I always tell you, thank you for the program, because it does catch a lot of segments that may not have been caught with our upload and extract. And if we don't get any errors, then we don't know, because it doesn't say you can maximize the planning, but that works.
Absolutely, you're good. So thank you. Tammy, would you like to talk of this, we need to transfer a million dollars from our general fund to our money market account with South Coast, again, that's an investment, and so we make a lot of interest off of that. And, you know, we're standing right now that, like I said before, the amount of money that we earn in interest off of the money market and the Georgia Fund One, that we've earned in a short period of time, has probably captured five years' worth of interest total from our previous interactions. So we're excited to do that, and then that money comes back, we just play with it until we need it. But it's something that we will continue to invest. So we'll need the board to approve that, just to document it as well. You wanna talk about this next area?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. As part of our requirements, our reporting requirements for receiving the Esser Art money, we are required to, every six months, review our plan of how we're spending the money. And then we need to provide documentation that we have disseminated that information. And we do it via a survey, and we also put the plan on our website. Rusty, if you could pull up our website, and it's on our district website, and I advise everybody to go take a look at that first big orange, our gold block is the actual plan that was updated on June of 2022. And then the, survey number three is the second big button there. And I would ask everybody to take the time to go and look at that and complete that survey, because we have to report the results to the Department of Education. So the more people we can get to do that, it shows that, you know, we have activity and people reviewing it. We can send that out in July, so we do get input from the community, as well as school employees and hopefully you guys as well. And so that's just the new Art Art requirements.
And I will say this, that, you know, what we have on that survey, we're doing those things. And so we match up with what they, what the teachers and any of the other stakeholders report that we think the money should be used for this, we're doing that. And I think we've been very prudent with how we've used the Esser and the Art money, and the CARES money, so. And we'll continue with that. It looks like that money's gonna continue to be available for the rest of this year and all of next year as it kind of, you know, as we work with it. Good part of that is that we are able to spend, you know, and pay for things out of that versus out of the general fund. And that allows us to continue to be prudent and also to build our fund equity a little bit.
I would like to add one more thing, if you want to look at the current budget, it's in our, in your financial package, and the Art piece is on pages ninety-nine and a hundred. It's the budget and the period-to-date expenditures for the Art funds.
Alright, any questions on item number three? Alright, the next area, just to let you know, every year we go through an audit. And so it's already started, and I just wanna let the board know that we had the auditors come in, and they sat in the conference room and spent two days going through all of our stuff. And they'll come back again, and, you know, we're one of the first districts, actually, that gets audited. And that's good for us. So, you know, we're on the cutting edge of anything that's coming up. They're actually very easy to work with, but a lot of data, they pull a lot of data. And, but that process has started, and I applaud, you know, Ms. Franklin for being able to pull that. When they asked for it, she's able to grab it and do it, so. But we're doing a great job, and we know this is gonna be an interesting year, because as I've mentioned in the past, we have an approved budget from the DOE. That doesn't mean the federal auditors will agree with them. So if we get a hit, it's not because it's not approved, it might be because they say, well, it's really intended for this. But we acknowledge that going forward, we've spent it based, all of our money's being spent based on an approved budget.
How long does the audit take?
Months.
Oh, okay.
Months.
Not days, months?
Literally, they will continue for months asking for one document, ten documents, two documents. I mean, it just goes on and on, and so, but that's every year they do that.
They usually come onsite for a while, but then after they're offsite, then like they continue to request more, request more, ask questions, and it's a long process.
It is a very long process, and Ms. Franklin does a great job, so we appreciate you. You know, that's one of the things that Ms. Franklin and I work very closely together on all the budget areas, and so, you know, we talk the same language, I think, and that's important, because we have the same vision, and we're not gonna spend a dime that's not supposed to be spent, and we work well with that. So, next area up here is, I've asked Mr. McNair to give a brief update on the GNEX program. And just so everybody's aware, the state was sued back when Obama was president. And then it kind of took a lull when Trump came in, and then when Biden came in, that lawsuit came right back. And it's all dealing with this, which is, this GNEX program works with our most severe students. And so this is, this is not unique just to Georgia, but it is a massive lawsuit coming from the Department of Justice.
That's pretty sharp, Mr. McNair. I've been watching you the whole meeting.
You shouldn't even have suggested it.
Ah, so he's holding it out, yeah, yeah.
Send me up.
One of the quick, we go with the GNEX update, as you guys know, this is kind of a revolving door as far as the events and things that are happening. On the screen and on your monitors, I did put our current status and wanted to give you an update. Right now, we have seven students that are currently being funded through GNEX. Back in March twenty-two, the state senate was doing their appropriations, and believe it or not, they zeroed out our GNEX budget for F five twenty-three, in other words, there was no money that they were gonna put there. They ended up giving us sixty-four million, and when I say us, that means GNEX programs around the state. They ended up putting sixty-four million dollars back into the budget after zeroing it out. They also, with that, it was initially, when they looked at the budget, they said, well, we got sixty-four, but we're gonna reduce it by twenty-two. Well, that created an uproar, and they ended up putting the money back in. What does that mean for us? Basically, what that means is that by November the first, the big thing with the budget was that intent was to move the QBE funds back to the local district, or to DOE. So let's take this money that we appropriate, give it to DOE, and let them disperse the money in the local districts. Well, again, the sixty-four million dollars is a lot of money, and it covers a lot of different things in the districts. So we had to be concerned, we were concerned that we would be underfunded. So again, right now, we're kind of in the transition period, and during that transition period, they gave the DOE November the first, which has already passed, a time to submit proposals to them to basically say, what are your suggestions or recommendations as far as budgeting for next year? Well, right now, there's a senate review committee being put together by the senators at the state legislature, and there are no GNEX people on it, or no, the no people in that committee, which is kind of crazy, because if you want input, you need to get input from all stakeholders. So again, we're still in that transition period. On the fourteenth of October, we had a district meeting with the local special ed directors, because this affects us directly with everything that happens in our program. And one of the things that we looked at is some consideration for creating programs at our two sites. We have a Glen site and we have a Heinzville site. But we're looking at ways to basically create funding source by creating either charter, a magnet, or some type of transition programs at these particular locations, so the state would be able to fund us, so help make up the difference from that funding. And that's an ongoing process also. But we started looking at what's happening in our district, Dr. Poulos, Dr. Spence over in Glen County, they're all working it together and talking about this on an ongoing basis. So again, this is a process that we have to start thinking about as a board, because it's gonna affect us when it comes to our planning financially for next school year, or during this transition period. The biggest thing that we have to be concerned with is the proportionate expenditures. In other words, if we go into Glen next year with our seven students, what is gonna be our cost with the limited QBE bonds coming from the state to cover salary and benefits for staffing that's in that location, facility costs, contracted costs related to nursing, SROs, counselors, and even PCBA therapists? And also transportation. Right now, we have a bus going from McIntosh to Heinzville every single day and back. So again, these costs right now are being subsidized to some extent by the state with the budget that they propose. And so we're paying out to cover that cost, but at the same time, just imagine what it would be like once they pull the rug from under, it's like they did before. So again, I wanted to keep you guys updated with this, and this is gonna be ongoing. So I'm probably meeting with you as I get more information, meeting with you to kind of let you know where we're standing. Right now, Ms. Spud, who's the district GNEX director, is working on some proposed costs from the Glen site and from the Heinzville site to kind of look at what that's gonna be. With us only having seven students, we're not gonna be responsible for all the costs, but we do have a proportionate share of that cost. So I wanted to kind of let you know where we are in that process, and as I get more information, I'll definitely share it.
So what typically happens with this is that the So what typically happens with this is that they, there's a level five funding. That money bypasses the school district. We don't even get it. It goes straight to the RISA, RISA gives it the GNEX. So they want to change it to give us a level four funding, but that then means we're responsible for everything Mr. McNair just said. So we either fund our own little hub, which is fully funded with supervision and teachers and nurses and all that. Or we partner with Heinzville or we partner with Glen County and then they're going to want their fair share. It's going to be, it's, it's going to cost. And this is all a result of the lawsuit that they've now pushed the legal aspect and cut the state budget and they're going to push it down. My guess is all that's going to happen is the lawsuit's going to follow.
Right.
Any questions about the GNEX? It's very complicated, but it, it, like Dr. Poulis says, it has more to do with the fact that GNEX was, was not providing us a level of service that was comparable to the regular homeschool sites. And so the federal government got involved, that's where the lawsuit came. And when that happened, all of a sudden they, they sued the state. Well, the state is basically shifting the responsibility to the local district.
To the district.
And so that's where we are and that's kind of where we're headed at this point. So like I said, I will be keeping you guys updated as I get more information with this, okay? Any other questions or concerns at this point?
No, sir.
All right.
So the next area that I've asked Mr. McNair to cover is the issue of our mental health. We've been talking about this for close to a year and a half, two years. And as part of that as well, I know we've talked about Apex. And so I wanted Mr. McNair to give the entire board the facts regarding where we're at.
All right. Well, we had an opportunity to meet with the Apex, um, executive director. Ms. Felicia Anderson on the board that I have, she used to be the program manager when I first got here. And she's actually been promoted up to executive director. So we met with her, myself and Mr. Barry met with her and her new staff person, which is Ms. Rivers, who's the new program manager. First year, uh, not really a lot of experience, but moved into the job. We do have one Apex worker here, um, Ms. Daisy Myers. And she's nationally certified counselor, but she's not a licensed counselor. So we're working with somebody that's basically in training. Um, so again, it's, it's a development process as far as time and experience before you actually get that LPC designation. And so really with the changes happening, this is one of the big things that we have. Ms. Daisy Myers is the only Apex counselor that we have.
And how long have we had just one?
Uh, we've had one for at least three years, three years. When they first started, uh, prior to me getting here, uh, Ms. Anderson explained that they had one at each school.
Correct.
And having one at school, one of the things that they ran into in our conversation with her was that they did not have, they could not justify the, the grant funding. In other words, they get a grant every year from the state, from the Department of Behavioral Health and, and services, but they could not justify having one at each school with a district this size. So they reduced it. And so as a result of actually reducing the staffing at those schools, they never replaced it. And so at the time, when I got here at nineteen, having one person was adequate to some extent, but they still probably needed one more. And then unfortunately, we had the pandemic. What happened during the pandemic? Well, everything happened. We had school closed, a lot of different things was happening in the school system, meaning as far as services and things like that. There were limited services. Right now we have a total of seventy students at three schools receiving Apex services. Um, the, the counselor in her current role, and when we spoke to their team, she can only see one kid every two weeks. And that isn't, that means that despite any other crisis that are going on, so that two weeks may be moved to three weeks, depending on what the situation is in our schools. One of the things that we were sad to hear, and it was one thing that was brought up during our meeting, was that due to staffing shortages, they asked us to actually put a pause on new intake. So at this point, they're not even taking new students into the Apex program. So we're kind of all in a holding pattern with those seventy students. And if there are other students that are needing services through Apex, they just physically do not have the resources to be able to support the kids that we have here. So the one we have, we have here right now, matter of fact, uh, Mr. Barry, if you recall, they were asking us, if we had resources that could assist them because they're so short-staffed. And it's, it's, it's not just here in McIntosh, it's the whole region that this is a problem. And so we're running into that problem. Plus there are only a few insurance carriers. We have Medicaid, we have Marigrou, Resource and WellCare that they will only take the insurance for. The application process is somewhat cumbersome because it takes a while to get all the consents, get everything set up, really work with our parents to get moved forward with whatever services we're going to provide. I put up here hospitalizations, our current options. Right now St. Simon has a waitlist. Uh, Coastal Harbor, they're not taking any more patients because they're in the state of Medicaid. So most of our parents who have the Medicaid insurance that want to take their kids to Savannah to get the inpatient treatment can't even get the inpatient treatment. Now however, we do have Gateway Behavioral Health in Glen that's available for basically, uh, clinic services, but not hospitalization. They only are working with adults at this point. Most of our kids right now, and Ms., Ms. Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, when they go to the emergency room, they work with their crisis counselor, their suicide, uh, threat assessment people. Their job is to find an outside facility for a referral. As I mentioned earlier, there are only a couple here. So there's no outside facility for a referral. What, what is happening, and Ms. Barry has been in contact with many of our parents, they're having to send them to Atlanta, Noonan, Augusta, Carrollton and Donaldsonville just to find a bed. So that's creating a tremendous amount of stress on our parents and our kids and schools. Because when they're there, we get, we keep the communications open. So the parents are concerned about their education, what's going to happen next? Because they're really, it's really uncertain about how long they're going to be hospitalized. But one of the things that we've done is started looking at some of the clinics and the practices that are local. And in our conversations with, with some of our private providers, one of the things that they told us, um, psychologists and psychiatrists that we've worked with, that they're overwhelmed at this point. They, they're currently only seeing, uh, they got a two to three month waiting period for most, uh, kids that are looking at or young adults that are coming into their, uh, facilities. So again, we're, we're running into that. We do have telehealth. The telehealth services through Apex, they discontinued it during the pandemic because of the fact that parents were very inconsistent with making their, their children available and the technology was a problem. So we're working with them to try and figure out a way to utilize our telehealth program to work with theirs. But again, we run into the same problem, which is staffing. They don't have the staffing to be able to help with the telehealth services through Apex. Out of this, uh, I think it's right now, looking at when we first started in August, there were five kids in our crisis intervention that we were actually monitoring, actively monitoring. Right now there are twenty-three. Of those twenty-three, four of them are Apex kids. So Todd Grant has five kids right now that we're actively monitoring. His middle school has nine and McIntosh County, Kevin has eight.
And so why are, okay, just to make sure that the board knows, why are we monitoring those twenty-three? What makes sense the people we're monitoring?
Um, they don't have crisis, suicide, ideation or intent, or which of those also the side of homicidal. Um, no intent, they believe, but we are monitoring those kids and keeping up with them. Um, several who are hospitalized right now or who's come out of the hospital or are still in crisis. Um, even in touch with their parents, but when they do come back to school, they transition into the school, um, in a safe.
And that's what we get to the, for the school. What we've had to do is be more actively engaged in what we do when they come back. And what we've done instead of, uh, when they're having crisis on the campus, uh, our counselors have been working with a mental health type screener, suicidal screener. Once they conduct those screenings on, on these kids, our parents are contacted and the SRO sometimes gets involved with that process. Uh, the parents are encouraged once they come to the building to seek outside counseling or some type of mental health professional. We have started, um, just recently of what's called a reentry, uh, program, which means once they go to the hospital, they come back to our school. Because we have very limited information about their possible outcomes or the, or what's going to happen to them in the future. We go through a reentry where we actually document everything that we're going to do for that student and have that discussion and we put what's called a school safety plan in place. That way we can actively not only monitor the students, but actually keep, support them also while they're in the building. I can tell you, we have, uh, several of our middle school's young ladies, we're actually being supervised via the camera and other staff members when they go to the restroom because of the risk of possible cutting and suicide type things. So again, we're being proactive in our approach, but at the same time, we're, we're limited because the resources around us are not available. And so we have to work with our parents, work with our kids to try and do what we can to make sure our schools, our, our students are safe and that they're being taken care of. Um, at this point, one of the things that's only, that's going on is that the ongoing consultation, we, uh, Mr. Barry is constantly in contact with the parents. So there's a lot of communication going on from that standpoint. But like I said, early on, the sad thing is that we, we don't have the beds. So when the kids are having a crisis and they have to be hospitalized, we're sending them all over the state basically by the dead. So I wanted to give you an update on that. Any questions about, I had a quick.
Ms. McNair, I was going to ask, um, the question I know, and I do know about the shortage, um, especially with the counseling because, you know, we deal with them as well. And we're still dealing with camp, canceling, um, even the, the appointment that the kid's supposed to have, but still not getting. Um, have you all looked at any other avenue of support?
Yes, we have. There is, um, uh, if you guys remember Dr. Kevin O'Chandler from Coastal Health, he was in here, uh, not, uh, several months ago. I've, I've been in communication with him and we're going to get together, try and work out an MOU, um, so we can possibly utilize his services. And that may be having his advanced practice nurseship, being able to conduct cert, uh, services on campuses. But again, all of that would have to be worked out with, with, and you guys would be a part of that also. But other than that, we're very limited. Mrs. Mr. Barry goes way up and beyond as far as her communication with the local therapists and things that are happening. But what you just said about cancellations is not uncommon because the counselors have a dilemma. I'm working with this kid who's in crisis and has a counseling, but then I have one that's suicidal. So I canceled this one because he's okay right now, but I have to go to that one. So again, a lot of that is taking place when it, when it comes to what we're doing here at the school level. And unfortunately, just like I said, the resources are not available. You know it's bad when Apex will say, what do y'all use and we need help for you? And we're depending on them to cook the body.
So I'll also say this is that, you know, I've, I've raised this as a social emotional issue. Um, the reason that the three of us meet once a week is to make sure that we continue to monitor it. And we go through all of those twenty-some students by name, you know, what's going on with them. Uh, if you look back in, uh, the situations that happened in St. Louis just recently with the school shooting. And that was a, a young man that was identified as having social emotional issues. Um, they lost sight of him and he re-entered in the school and ended up killing two and injuring seven. And so, uh, it's just, it's just a concern. And I, I, I've made note of it before. It's one of those areas that we just have to continue to provide, uh, focus on.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're being as proactive as possible, but when our resources out there are very limited and the people that we depend on are telling us they haven't one, it really puts us in a dilemma. So again, I, kudos from this Barry, raw board. And more than anything, communication with the parents and the, and the, and the people that, the support and know that the school is still there. Even kids that are up in Atlanta and Donaldsonville and different places, she's still contacting the parents to check in with the kids and put them in their progress at this point, so.
Anything you'd like to say?
Um, my air suffered it. Um, it is very emotional because there is a mental health crisis happening in our country. Uh, not just here in McIntosh, it's everywhere. Uh, we may be small, but it's there. And I know we're missing kids. Um, and a lot of them don't, they don't either know that there's somebody that they can talk to or they're, so they are afraid to talk. So we are missing kids. So we're really trying to sort of, us being visible as school health sort of distressed adults to talk to, um, for the kids. And then, um, I, I know that the parents that I've talked to, they seem to really appreciate the phone call from the school district. So I think that's, is really, it goes a long way to your, you know, they have somebody ready to support their student when they come back to school.
And also, you know, being, um, a pastor in, in the community, um, Mr. McNair and Mr. Barry, uh, we've noticed even for adults, they're doing the same thing, trying to get beds. Um, and it's, it's been crazy, um, because we are at, especially pastors are trying to figure out how to better serve, um, the community with adults who are really going through mental. Since, since we went through this pandemic with COVID, it has increased mental deficiency in adults. And so, uh, it's, it's all over, but you really got to do something because it's getting a little worse.
And we do have the crisis line, information sent out. And it's just more awareness than anything. Like I said, we're a small community, we're friendly, we want to do what we can to support our kids. All the agencies that we work with include DFACs that have been there for us, but even they're hanging on there because they're limited with the resources, they're only taking the most critical crisis situations before they add. But we are reporting and we're continuing to meet every Friday, the three, it's done for sometimes. And we look at each individual student, the communication that's going on and what are the next steps as far as supporting them.
And we're just touching it. That's a concern. Thank you.
Any other questions for me, concerns?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right, next up is the discussion of October twenty-two financial reports. Ms. Franklin?
All right, we begin everyone. If you return to page one, the general operating account, we began the month with one point, one point one million. We had receipts of, uh, two point five nine million and we had disbursements of one point five million, leaving us with a balance of one point one, uh, I'm sorry, two point one nine million in the general operating account. Page thirty, uh, general fund revenues with the school year thirty-three percent complete. We have received, uh, three point seven million in general fund revenues, which is twenty-four point four percent, um, of, uh, budgeted fifteen point three million in revenues. And I just want to point out that that does include, um, the five hundred thousand dollar transfer in from the local projects that we did so that we would not have to get a tan. On to page thirty-two, general fund expenditures. We had, we've got period to date, three point five million in general fund expenditures, which is twenty-two percent, almost twenty-three percent of our budgeted fifteen point four million in general fund expenditures. Page thirty-seven, fund equity, our current fund balance. Got it there?
Yeah, I'm trying to break it.
Our current fund balance is at two point eight five million. Page one oh nine, school nutrition, that is two hundred ninety-eight thousand in the school nutrition.
I don't have.
There you go. Okay, on to page one hun, one hundred and twenty-one, local projects. We have one point four eight million in the local projects account. Money market account, one hundred and twenty-four. We have.
Let's stop for just a minute, uh, go back one more slide, I think it's. Okay, so that local projects, that's where you pulled the five hundred thousand from, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that five hundred goes back in.
We will put that back in.
That's right. Okay.
Uh, on to page one hundred and twenty-four, the money market account. We've got a million, two thousand dollars. And that's where we'll be transferring a million to bring that back up to two man.
And so October, we received three hundred and thirty dollars in interest alone.
Correct. On the million dollars. Uh, page one hundred and twenty-six, the Georgia Fund One account. Okay, we had one point two nine million. We had East Floss receipts of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-two. We earned interest in October for three thousand two hundred dollars, leaving us with one point four million in the Georgia Fund One account. And I would like to turn to page one twenty-seven, which is our east. And I would like to turn to page one twenty-seven, which is our East Floss receipts. And I, I kinda just wanna point out to you since February of twenty-two, if you look at that interest column, that's when we moved our debt service money from Southeastern Bank to the Georgia Fund One. And I just wanted you to see the interest that we have been earning since we transferred that into the Georgia Fund One account.
By the, by the end of the year, there's gonna be a hundred million money.
That was a really good move. And that's all I have. If there are no questions. Okay.
Okay.
All right. The, the next area up here is a discussion of any of the minutes, previous meetings. If you'll take a look at those and get with Ms. Lane and myself. Um, and then we'll put those in front of the board for approval next Monday. Um, Board of Education norms, if you can pull that document up. And again, if you have not already taken a look at it, if you'll please do that. Uh, Ms. Bridgman, again, is recommending that as part of our just normal procedures, how the board operates, how the board operates with stakeholders, how the board operates with the superintendent, just norms and, and how we do business. And so, uh, take a look at that and then at the next meeting, we hope to be able to put that in, in place. Uh, it gives a role of everyone. We do have a policy on who knows what. And then, um, that just kinda lines up so that there's no ambiguity regarding who's responsible for what. So, uh, any changes you may have to that, if you'll get with me or Ms. Bridgman, and we'll try to put those in place. Any questions on that at all?
Nope.
All right, next area here is, uh, twenty twenty-three MAX- board of education meeting dates. Ms. Lane, these are the ones that we all settled on, is that right? Okay, so again, for starting the new calendar year, that these would be the new dates that we would meet, both for the work session. Um, one of the areas up there, and, and again, it would be asked of the board, um, I, I guess the suggestion was to move the work session back to six o'clock. But that's again, something that the board had to vote on to move it back from five to six and then the dates that are there, that we bring that forward. Okay, so as this document reflects it, starting at six, uh, at both meetings that, that are listed there. And then the dates, several of the dates are based on when, when the, uh, the, the school comes back in session or if there's a holiday or whatever. Take a good look. I th- I know we put that out already, um, once or twice, but you know, we need to vote on that. So we're ready to go come January.
We got the full term on and look at the July dates because I think that was the question that we moved around for.
Yeah, with, with the holiday and then to be able to meet and, and also to have a board meeting before school starts. All right, any questions on the, on those dates? If not, let's, uh, Mr. Masa, will you come up and let's talk about what's going on with facilities and operations?
Great evening, board. Start off with the awning at McIntosh County Middle School. We are, um, wanting to put in awning that goes on the bus loop. At this point, if you come out the back door of the middle school where the buses are during a rainy day or anytime that the weather's implement, um, you get all up very wet. So that awning would go down the side of the building, all the way wrapped around to the other hallway. So that the students could come out of both hallways, stay dry and, um, in a safe orderly fashion, reach the buses.
And, and stay out of the sun as well.
And stay out of the sun. But, um, there's no awning in the back there. So that's gonna be a, a great, um, purchase. We have a, a great company that put the one, the Todd Grant preschool down. Um, so that, that's an option for us to, to consider as we move forward.
And this will be on the, the bus side where the buses coming in. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, the, the new kitchen project, it'll come right out that door, down that, uh, walkway and right out the back door there. So it'll be like a little use there and have plenty of room for our kids to be safe, dry and, um, secure there. All right.
And this is the only estimate we have?
This, this is the one, you know, the one pro- process is, is really tough right now that we weren't able to find a lot of companies that are doing it. Um, this company we've worked with before, we know it, and we're still searching for another one. We just haven't been able to find, um, somebody that could do it within our timeline to, you know. Getting those quotes, um, with supply chain and all, seemed like it was gonna be a part of it all. We are searching out.
The middle school is the only school that didn't have an awning for the bus loop.
All right, RFP, RFP for the McIntosh County Middle School bleachers is posted. We've gotten some interest in it. I've gotten three emails with companies that will be there for the walkthrough. They're gonna have a walkthrough and take a look at the project. Um, so we'll see what kind of bids we get. We've gotten, um, some preliminary quotes before we did the RFP, just to see the ballpark. And now we get, um, a competitive bid, um, sealed bid opened up at, here at the board office or with Dr. Poulos and know exactly what we're, we're dealing with. So the timeline for that, it was advertised October twenty-sixth. A pre-bid meeting will be on November ninth, um, and the proposal due date, November eighteen. And BOE, it'll be brought to BOE on December twelfth. And we can, um, have a proper job and see if we can get the bleachers, um, fixed up. Every year we do a bleacher inspection report from an outside company and they're always mentioned on there. They're old, they don't pull out properly. Um, it, it's time for them to be replaced and repaired. Not repaired, but, uh, not repairable, but they need to be replaced.
Okay.
All right, raising of oak grove. Um, Dr. Poulos and I have been looking at exactly, um, what that project entails. I'll be doing an RFP for the raising of oak grove. Um, our timeline is, um, all dependent on when exactly we'll get that new freezer. Cause we will be using the kitchen, um, freezer in the back room. Questions a little bit about the, on the kitchen project notes. But, um, we possibly could have an RFP out in the next month or two and maybe in April or May. It's possible that, um, we could be prepared to raise oak grove if, if, if everything lines up for that thing.
I would like to mention at this point that I asked Mr. Riles to send a couple of guys out to that grazed area and to dig down and see what they found. And so they were, they went to several different locations and the outside is clearly foundation, but with inside of it, it's dirt and lots of it. And so, uh.
I wonder if that was there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to say then. There are some, um, man, there's a manhole on the opposite side that's closest to the actual road. And we went, you know, we had to go down there as well. And I think at that point, it used to be an active, um, vault. And so it still has some water in it, but it also had some, some way of chlorinating it. There's a chlorinator in there. So I'll get with the city and just say, you know, is there any reason it's not operable? But that, that should be removed and we'll make sure that, that we do it right. It'd be part of the RFP when we move forward. But to clear all that out and make that all green, um, that, that's a big undertaking. But what a, what a magnificent change that'll have to, to that actual, you know, facade of, of the middle school. And we will probably take that good dirt and use it at the triangle to fill in some of those holes. I call it the triangle where we cut all those trees down, start filling in some of those holes and, and use it out. Yeah, yeah.
All right, really exciting news. The McIntosh County Middle School kitchen project is coming around famously. It's looking so nice. The contractor will be out of there by the end of the week. The cleaning crew that they're sending in is coming in next week to do their final cleaning, which will follow up with moving a, just a few, uh, a little bit of equipment that we have at the, um, middle school, at the old kitchen, moving it over there during the cri- the break, the Christmas break. And then hopefully that we'll be able to open school back up on January second and be using that kitchen. That's, that's the plan. Again, the only thing that's gonna be left is that freezer that is, um, still on back order. But that's what we're gonna be using, the freezer that's still at the old kitchen area. And then just once a week, they'll, we'll have some smaller freezers that are there, we'll transport over. And then when that gets in, um, that'll free us up to, to make our move on oak grove. But, um, the project is really, really gonna be a, a shining star for McIntosh County Middle School. It's gonna be a place that the kids will be proud of. And, um, again, Dr. Poulos has the foresight to be thinking that it's got hookups for generators and possibly even used during an emergency situation to, um, help the community out. So all in all, that's gonna be a game changer for McIntosh County.
We will schedule a grand opening. I think that would be appropriate. I mean, we spent one point seven million dollars on it and it is, it is going to be a, a highlight. It's a, it's a great facility. Uh, just to kinda go back to what Mr. Masa stated though, there are just a couple of items that are, that are still outstanding. One is obviously the cooler freezer, combi oven, it still has to come in. And then on top of that, the transfer switch for the generator, they still have to get that in and install it. Uh, but, but by far, the majority of that is, is done and they're cleaning up and, and it looks great. Um, what a model kitchen though too. When you go in and, and we get, we need to take a tour over there ahead of time. It is, it is really a spectacular. The way, way it's been lined up by Ms. Harrison, um, as far as just the space and it's, it's, it's a great, great project. And I do expect at this point that the, that it'll come in under budget. You know, the contingency and we might get about thirty thousand left on the contingency, which is good, which we can use, um, for some of these other projects we just talked about. And then on top of that, we're putting in some grants for some of the kitchen equipment. But again, if we get the grants, then we won't have to pay those amounts for the kitchen equipment that comes in. So we're being very judicious with all of that. Um, but I'm proud to say that we have managed it, managed it well. It's a great, great kitchen and cafeteria area.
Absolutely. Like I said, a jewel for our family. The next item was solar panel updates. Um, supply chains have come through and we're getting even closer. As note, as we've been pushed back, pushed back, but we have seen the light of the tunnel. Um, on the week of the Thanksgiving break, we'll have a shutdown of the system of the, the power when they actually hook it up to the, um, the solar panels. That'll be between eleven twenty-one and eleven twenty-four. And then Georgia Power will do a witness test, they call it. And, um, the, the, what they're saying is on twelve twenty-three, before that Christmas, um, break, or right in that time, we'll officially turn the power on. So, um, we've been told that we're gonna be turning it on in the past. So I don't wanna even say, um, for sure, but that's the timeline. So, um, the, the audit has been done by Georgia Power. Everything's in order. Um, we just have to actually hook it up. We don't have an actual date for that to, to switch it up. So we're excited about that.
So before we get to item B, um, I just wanted, I've, I've talked to the board about this already. And y'all realize that the status of the, of the current football field and where we're at. And so, um, we need to do something with fixing the drains and, and fixing the field. And so I, I've asked Mr. Masa to go through some of those. And so I, I really wanna make sure that I, I provide the board with some options. And, and there really are four. There are four options. And so, um, the first option is literally to fix the drains ourselves and bring them up. And it's gonna cost us a little bit of money, but right now those drains are so low that they're a safety issue. So that fixes a safety issue on the field. Doesn't fix the field itself with the problems we have with weeds and all that, but it does fix the safety issue. You know, I, I put it in a, I've got a list in here to show you, which is about fifty thousand dollars to, to go through, dig it out, put sand in it, laser it, all that. I mean, we could probably handle that mostly ourselves. That's option one. Option two is you get a company that comes in and, and they do it. And, and we've had discussions with a couple of contractors and, you know, they dig up all of it, they go over and redo the whole thing again. And we've got estimates from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand based on what they do to fix the drains. You know.
Without doing anything.
W- without, again, doing anything with the actual field. This is just drains. Uh, and you know, that fixes a safety issue, but also fix, fixes a drainage issue. I will say that with the sand there, the water does dissipate. It goes away. So, you know, option one still to me would be the most viable option based on if we're only gonna focus on, on, um, drains. Because it, it fixes the safety issue. The third issue would possibly be that, you know, we level off the field and we get rid of the bad dirt that's been on there for, for some time, um, and then we resite it. And there are several different, it depends on, you know, where you go for it. But we've gotten estimates from, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand for a very low grade sod to, you know, four or five hundred thousand for the top of the line sod, which is they fix the drain. They come in and they, they remove the, the dirt that's there, they replace the dirt and they come in with a, with a premier, uh, sod that's on top of it. And then the last issue is the issue of a, uh, turfing it. And so I know that all four of these issues are of concern. I mean, to, to sit here and make a recommendation is a very difficult, difficult task to do. But also wanna make sure that I provide the board with all of the information that's available on that. Um, can you pull up that one document that shows costs for the, that one on the right? So, Mr. Masa, will you go through these and just kinda talk through and, and if, just to, to kinda cut to it though, that, that middle number ten, typically if you turf, your, your field lasts from ten to twelve years on a typical duration. So we use that low number as a, as basically a guide. So.
The first one is paint and, um, it sounds like a lot of money for paint, but that's, that's what it costs about a thousand dollars a game for, um, painting that field. That's with the different colors and all the, um, equipment that you use. It's not just regular, um, spray paint. That field paint's expensive. And we saw an uptick in, even with this, um, pandemic and supply chain issue. We had a hard time even getting materials here. We, um, struggled to even get what we needed and we used to notice that we didn't have a flag. We weren't even able to get some of the colors this year that we typically have. So for every year, we roughly, we pay about six thousand in paint. Pesticides and fertilizers, we contracted with a company, I think it was twenty-eight thousand dollars for all the fields. But they focused mostly on that football field, which took most fertilizer and most maintenance. So we cut that out. So approximately fifteen thousand was the, the, for the, um, football field labor. What we've, um, decided is that it's gonna take somebody full-time out there that's, um, that's their main job is to take care of that football field, ensure that it's in top priority, um, or top condition and in great shape. So that's approximately thirty-five for a salary. Uh, and that's, uh, without benefit, that's not even a whole salary, uh, per salary to a football player.
It's proportionate though, because that same person takes care of the softball field, the football, the baseball field and the practice field. So this is really how much time the, the premier field that they spend their most time on.
You know, the irrigation and sprinklers, even though that we went to a well, yeah, um, we still are having to always put into electricity, well parts. And then the, um, sprinkler heads themselves, they are all P ninety heads. These very big heads are all about a hundred and, um, change a piece. So they're very expensive. There's a lot of them. And every year we gotta go through and replace heads on there. That's just, um, routine maintenance for our football field. And, um, so we, we average about five thousand in just the pump and sprinklers and things of that nature, taking care of the watering of that field. Real mower maintenance. We got that brand new real mower and we're keeping it up today. So, um, again, we know we use a real mower for other, um, projects, but we keep that real mower pretty much for the football field. We have the other Green John gear that's in the shop and we've used it for, of, we're gonna be using it for the other field. But keeping that mower in pristine condition takes about two thousand. The blades being sharpened each year, twice a year at times, um, it's expensive. So that's probably.
It's like a thousand bucks a pop just to have those blades sharpened.
Every year the top dress has to be done. Keeps, um, keeps field level. It keeps, um, it growing in just the right way. And that's three thousand. Um, that's just for that field with sand and top dress. It's twenty-five hundred top dressing and the sand is so much. So it's about three thousand every year in top dressing. And then miscellaneous is when we oversee it like we did for this game. Um, but those are the things that are miscellaneous. So a total of about sixty-seven, just to keep that field, um, maintained well. And then if you compound that over the ten years, you can see that it's roughly six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So knowing that and in your decision moving forward for what you can do, those are the expenses that are there.
And, and so just to kinda recap again, and, and here's my, as a superintendent, um, yeah, I work with Ms. Franklin on the numbers. And so, you know, could we afford to go with the high end of, of putting a turf in? We'd find the money, we could do it. And right now with Kira's money, probably most optimal time, we may never have an opportunity again to have that type of money. But I'm also concerned that we're about to approach a recession. I, I just see it. I mean, if, if the, the crystal ball's there, um, and so I, I, I would have a hard time recommending that without acknowledging the fact that, you know, we could go into dire straits here soon with, um, cuts from the state. Even though, you know, financially the state's saying they're great, uh, everything you see is, is typically with a recession, it's lagging. And so eight months from now, we could just bam, we're, we're seeing another cut. And I don't know if that's gonna happen. And so, eight months from now, we could just bam, we're, we're seeing a, another cut, and I don't know if that's gonna happen. Um, at the same point, though, we do have a safety issue. That, those drains have to be fixed. And so, um, I would just like, you know, the kind of the take of the board and, and where you stood it. I, I know that I've had at least, uh, three or four of you that have walked it, so you see the problems. And some of those drains, I mean, they're, they're a foot and a half down, and, and, you know, you're talking about some serious ankle, um, and leg injuries if somebody hits one of those. Um, could we, under, under options one and option two, um, make do with the actual field? You know, we'll patch it up. We'll, we'll do. We'll put some sod in there. We'll baby it. Um, we'll fertilize it, and, you know, we've got Gerald, that he's gonna go through, and, and is already working on getting his pesticide fertilizer certificate. Um, and, you know, he'll, he'll do that. But I, I didn't want to misnumber that, you know, this is just one of those inexpensive processes, because when you look at that, there's a lot of money that's gonna be put towards maintaining the field over the next ten years. And so, um, cost effectiveness-wise, in the long run, the turf really makes a lot of sense. But you're also expending a lot of money now versus years two through ten. Um, you know, so, and, and again, as a, as a superintendent, I prudently would probably recommend, um, an option one or two at this point.
Yeah.
And, um, I just wanna know if, if the board has that same feeling towards this. And, you know, I'd really like to try with option one first, and put probably fifty thousand into fixing the drains, and then keep building the money up, that if we do see that we don't hit a recession, um, in the long run, you see the money could still be saved. It's an investment on that field if we end up turning it around to a turf. And I, I hope I'm articulating that well enough that you see where I'm at on it. Any comments from any of the board members on it?
Well, I, I agree with you on the, um, the, the first option. Um, I have seen, back in two thousand and five, we hosted a playoff game here, and they wouldn't let us play it, which we were over here. They wouldn't let us play it here because the, the field was not deemed safe. So, we had to play it over at Glen County Stadium. Um, so, you know, child break his leg. I mean, we have soccer on there. We have graduation. I mean, it definitely needs the work done. There's no doubt. But, um, you know, right now, we're having to put a, a barrel over there on the visitor's side. Um, so, um, yeah, I'm... Huh?
I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. But I agree with you on that option one. Yeah.
Yeah. So, if, um, if I get my marching orders on that, I mean, I'd like to get started on it. But I also would like to make sure that we're pulling together data on the other options if we don't go into recession. Um, and, and we're not able to, because literally, what I'm saying about the green, the grass, the holes, I mean, we've got a lot of work to do on that, and that's gonna continue. But, um, fill it in, fill it in the gaps, and making sure that it's level, that you don't get an ankle twister and all, that still has to be done. Um, you know, I, I would love to be able to say, hey, let's go to turf, which is that what most people around us? But I, I can't make that recommendation right now.
Yes, that's chuck the money.
It is. Any questions?
I have a quick question on the, or, let's say you went the turf route. At, at the conclusion of that estimated life in twelve years, is that another six hundred and seventy thousand? Or is most of the infrastructure there where it just needs to be?
Okay, now let me make sure we're straight, because this is what we spend on normal operations, okay?
No, no, no. Again, alright. Well, turf's about seven hundred thousand, but turf is...
It's probably gonna be more, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But at the end of that, the, the majority of your work on your field is done through the drainage systems.
Right.
So, if you get to the end of the life of the, the turf, like, like you do with your carpet, you pull it off, they kinda spruce it back up, and they put another layer on it.
Okay.
And so, uh, again...
It doesn't require that heavy capital.
No, no. But it's, um, it, it'll be a hefty one, but it won't be, you know?
Yeah, right.
It won't be a million-dollar project.
Kind of a whole management.
Um, and it, and to say that is, that, that's a good long-term investment. I mean, I, I can't say that it's not. I mean, it truly is.
No, no.
And I know there are people that are, that would complain that we spent that money upfront. But the fact of it is, you see how much we're already spending on it in that ten years.
Mm-hmm.
My reservation goes with the line of just trying to be prudent.
Absolutely.
And, and looking at what may happen yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
So, um, with the turf, I didn't hear, um, what kinda life it's spent.
If you, if, if we went with turf, it's usually ten to twelve, and some school systems get fifteen years. You know, if they, if you go with the higher end of turf itself, and everybody's got a different quality of turf that's out there. Um, but it is, it is also built that your drains are part of it. And so, it's, it's really a, it's an all-in-one package when, when you get to it. Any other questions?
So, either way, we got to do the drain.
We gotta do the drain. Um, and I, and I, again, if I'd have, i- if we were going into recession, I'd probably push and say, look, it's time to do that. We've got the money. But I just, I, I can't do that.
How, how many drains are there?
Ten.
Ten, great show.
Ten drains strategically located on the side, and every one of them has an issue.
Yeah.
And for a variety of different reasons, but, I mean, there, there are two in the, in the, uh, front end zone. They're so deep that, I mean, it's...
Yeah, they are.
It's like a foxhole. I mean, it's, it's that bad.
Yep.
Alright, any other questions on that? Alright, um, I'll, I'll try to push you the rest of this, and, and so, Mr. Maso, give us a quick update on COVID.
Again, I'm proud to, or not proud, I'm very happy to say that at this point, we don't have any positive COVID cases in the system. Um, we're doing our, our best to continue with the, um, protocols that we've had in place. I say every time that we have not given up on our safety protocols. We encourage hand washing, um, and all the safety things that we put in place, because the flu season is out, and it's hitting us hard. And so, um, still being safe with COVID protocol is a thing.
Listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda go through the rest of this real quick, so, um, just so we can make sure we get into exact recession, and, and just so we know. But basically, what you'll see there are three overnight trips. Uh, two of them, again, are just acknowledging that our, that our students went out of town, and then we have the overnight trip that's gonna happen this week. So, um, if, if the board didn't have a problem with it, our policy is that board approves field trips and excursions. Um, but it's kinda hard when, when it happens in between, so just acknowledging those are there. I do have, uh, personnel and legal in executive session that we'll need to talk about. And, and just to, we'll talk about that very last item there, that board policy, we will need to vote on it. That's the change in public participation. We'll vote on that, not tonight, but, but Monday night, okay? Uh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if we could go into executive session for legal and personnel.
Okay, we have a motion for executive session for legal and personnel.
Motion.
Alright, motion by Mr. Hewitt, second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor? Motion carried. Alright, you have a, uh, can we have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. McDonald.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hewitt. All in favor? Motion carried, three, zero. A motion, um, a superintendent recommendation of personnel, as submitted.
Senator.
Motion by Ms. McDonald.
Second.
I think he's doing that to include the, I've met Chris.
We'll do that next year.
We can do it, bro. We can do it next month. Okay.
All in favor? Motion carried. Board comment?
Just congratulations to, uh, all of our, um, winners tonight, uh, that we recognize, and congratulations to, uh, Ms. Alicia Durant for our, um, system-wide teacher of the year. Thank you.
Yes, and I concur. Um, it's a great day to give a year. Drama, sports, basketball, football.
Arts, everything.
Everything.
Academics, band, we're all doing great, and it is a great day to give a year. We're proud of all of them. Thank you.
Amen. I, I agree. I'm good.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Thank y'all.